Good evening, I call this meeting to order. At 5:16. Now I'm going to read the acknowledgement of meeting status. Can everybody hear me? I've got a... Members of the public may directly address the board by attending in-person meetings and submitting a public comment card. The board will not take public comments through the online platform and does not guarantee online streaming should that platform malfunction for any reason. Members of the public are encouraged to share their thoughts and concerns with our board president, Matty Cloud, at mcloud@petk12.org if they're not able to attend in person. Do we have any comments from the public on closed session items? Seeing no one here, we adjourn to closed session. Meeting is begun. Hello. I think we're going to start with one of the best things, and that's our special recognitions, reports, and presentations. We're going to start with Students of the Month. Let's start from Kennelworth. Yeah, yeah. That's right, perfect.
Introduce our February Student of the Month, Zoe Foster. Zoe has been chosen Student of the Month because she is one of Kennelworth's hardest-working students and most inspiring success stories. Zoe has impressed all of her teachers with her work ethic, positive attitude, perseverance, academic excellence. Zoe has maintained a 4.0 grade point average at Kennelworth and is an important member of the Kennelworth Leadership Class. Ms. Ramana, who has Zoe in both her leadership and US history class enthusiastically shared Zoe Foster is exceptional in every way. Zoe brings her full effort and focus to all that she does. Zoe is exceptionally giving, positive, and engaging. She always has a smile on her face and sprinkles kindness everywhere that she goes. Zoe is the first to raise her hand for anything. Zoe is dependable, responsible, and simply a joy to be around. Outside of school, Zoe is a decorated and talented ballerina. Zoe has been dancing for the Petaluma School of Ballet since she was three years old and most recently earned the lead role as Clara in her company's performance of "The Nutcracker." After high school, Zoe would like to attend the Gonzaga or Butler University where she plans on studying dance. Congratulations, Zoe.
Congratulations, Zoe. Can your family and friends stand up, please, so we can acknowledge them also?
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our February Student of the Month, Alexander Michelson. Alex has been chosen Student of the Month because of his continuous academic excellence and because he is one of Kennelworth's most outstanding student athletes. Self-motivated, bright, respectful, and all-around great guy are just a few of the ways Alex's teachers and coaches describe him. Ms. Maneras, Alex's Math 1 teacher, gladly shared Alex is a pleasure to work with in math. He has fantastic math skills. Alex is friendly, kind, and polite to his classmates and table partners every day. Alex is well-prepared for success in high school. Ms. Fahey, Alex's PE teacher, added Alex is an extremely hard worker. He holds himself to the highest standard. Alex's work ethic helps inspire his peers to try their best as well. Not only has Alex maintained a 4.0 grade point average, but he was also a valuable member of the Colts' 10-2 basketball team. Alex is particularly proud with 13-point effort to win versus Santa Rosa Junior High School. After high school, Alex is planning on attending college and has his eyes set on Stanford or UC Berkeley. We at Kennelworth are proud of Alex and knows he has a bright future ahead of him. Congratulations, Alex.
Congratulations, Alex. Can your family and friends please stand so we can acknowledge them? Congratulations, that's great. Okay, Petaluma Junior.
Petaluma Junior High School is proud to introduce our February Student of the Month, Kate Walsh. Kate was chosen as Student of the Month because she is an extremely consistent and hard-working student who brings a great attitude to PJHS and is always respectful and willing to help out. She was also a member of our track and field team last year. Kate's family had this to say. We couldn't be more proud of Kate. She is so independent, determined, smart, and above all, one of the sweetest people we know. Watching her grow into the young lady she is today has been amazing. We can't wait to continue watching her grow and succeed at whatever she puts her mind to for her future. Kate said that she enjoys the welcoming and friendly staff and students at PJHS. Outside of school, Kate shows pigs for 4H and does community service through FFA. Kate is an avid volleyball player as well. After high school, Kate plans to attend UC Davis and pursue a career as a large animal vet. We are lucky to have Kate representing PJHS as our February Student of the Month. Congratulations, Kate.
Congratulations, Kate. Can your family and friends please stand so we can acknowledge them? I love pigs.
Petaluma Junior High School is proud to introduce our February Student of the Month, Liam O'Neill. Liam was chosen as Student of the Month because he is kind, thoughtful, and hard-working. Liam is a creative and independent student who sets an excellent example for his peers. Liam's family said Liam is very conscientious and self-motivated student who takes pride in his schoolwork. With his strong work ethic and internal drive, we know he will excel in whatever career path he chooses. We have enjoyed watching him mature into a kind and ambitious young man. Liam says that one of the things he enjoys most about PJHS are his art and English classes. Liam plays CYO basketball and competitive soccer. He also volunteers as a camp counselor and is learning to play the guitar. Liam is looking forward to new experiences in high school and plans to attend a university after he graduates. We are lucky to have Liam representing PJHS as our February Student of the Month. Congratulations, Liam.
Congratulations, Liam. Can your family please stand so we can acknowledge you? Great job. Okay, you can sit, good. And now we have Casa Grande.
Dylan is a senior from Casa Grande who takes pride in achieving tasks with integrity and wit. While he's taken his fair share of honors, AP, and JC classes throughout his time at Casa Grande, it is not the class rigor that matters to Dylan, but rather the material that Dylan is able to take from his classes. To Dylan, the journey to becoming a more well-rounded, nuanced, and congenial person is never-ending. Outside of academics, Dylan is a prolific runner. During his time at Casa Grande, he's ran varsity cross-country for four years and varsity track and field for three years. And in the process, he's won multiple league championships as well. Dylan also has held a part-time job at In-N-Out Burger for the past three school years where he spends his time trying to give each customer valuable experiences. While Dylan is uncertain of what his career will be in the future, he hopes that whatever job he has, that he is able to follow the moral code that has cemented his character today. He hopes to be able to give back to his community that's propelled him to where he is today. And in addition, he hopes to elevate the voices of communities with less opportunities in society so that hopefully one day we all share one equal voice. Congratulations, Dylan.
Well done, Dylan. Is Dylan's family here so we can acknowledge them? Wow, good.
Ellie is a senior from Casa Grande who has dedicated her high school career to achieving high standards both in and out of the classroom. Challenging herself with various honors and AP classes, Ellie has been a driven student, working and pushing herself academically to succeed in these rigorous courses. Outside of school, Ellie has participated in both cross-country, her freshman and sophomore year, and soccer, which she has been playing her whole life. She also enjoys spending time volunteering at her local church cavalry chapel, Petaluma. After high school, Ellie plans on attending a four-year university to pursue nursing. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ellie, well done. Is your family here so we can acknowledge them? Excellent job. Okay, Petaluma High.
Okay, first up, we have Teague Velos. Over his last four years at Petaluma High School, Teague has spent his time working hard towards his future. Teague has been a member of the high school band playing the alto saxophone, which allowed him to go on multiple exciting trips to places such as New York and New Orleans. Teague is most happy with spending his last year at high school, meeting new people before college. The best part of senior year is the feeling of accomplishment that you are almost done with a big milestone. Teague would like to thank all of his friends for making these last four years so memorable. Teague is very grateful for his time as a PHS athlete on the soccer team. Being able to play with a large team that consists of high-level players was a very fun experience for him. The best part about being a part of a sports team is getting to know more people around the school and form new bonds. Training together and having shared experiences, whether it was being exhausted running laps or just winning a game, brought the team closer together. Sports create an atmosphere of discipline and unity that is important to bring into your life in high school. While Teague is excited to be entering a new chapter in his life, it is also important to remember what has happened and who has helped him get to where he is, such as his parents and older brother. Next year, Teague hopes to attend UC Santa Cruz with his older brother and major in math. Congrats.
Congrats, Teague. Is your family here so we can acknowledge them? There you go.
Okay, next up, we have Mira Middleton. Mira is a senior at Petaluma High School where she has attended all four years of high school. She has played volleyball for all four of those years, where she played middle hitter and recently won league with her team, which made up some of her favorite memories at Petaluma High School. Mira has shared her passion for volleyball by volunteering with Girls United and Grit Camp to help coach young volleyball players. She has also worked with Link Crew to help freshmen adjust to high school. Mira is the co-president of the America's Future Medical Professionals Club and is currently working with the club and the American Red Cross to organize a student-run blood drive at Petaluma High School. She volunteers at the Petaluma Valley Medical Center as well. In the future, Mira is hoping to continue helping others and is looking forward to pursuing a career in nursing for pediatrics or labor and delivery. She is expecting to graduate and either go directly into nursing school or major in public health before nursing school. She is also hoping to work abroad with communities in need after college. In her free time, Mira enjoys hiking, reading, going to the beach, and spending time with her friends and family. She's very appreciative of her family, especially her little sister, who has always been supportive of her endeavors. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mira. Can your family stand, please, and we can acknowledge you? Excellent job, all of you. That is very hard to do, to get up here and get Students of the Month, so congratulations. Okay, so now we go to the site reports from Casa Grande. Are you doing it together? Okay, and Petaluma.
Okay, I don't know who's doing the Casa part, but I guess I'll start. Oh. Okay, my name's Alice Steiner. I'm representing Petaluma High School today.
And I'm Erica Noon, current interim principal at Casa. I'm standing here for Lila because she's at a softball game.
Thanks. Okay, so we're going to start with Petaluma High School. Our first recent event was the marine science class, went on their annual Monterey trip. It's a three-day trip. They went to the Monterey Bay Aquarium as well as whale-watching on boats, which is really cool. And yeah, that's a picture of some girls at the aquarium. That's the whole class. And that's, I think, a picture of them kayaking, I believe. Next up, Sweethearts Dance. That's a picture of me and one of my favorite teachers, Mr. Brazil. A little backstory, there's a tradition at our school where the seniors, instead of wearing formal dresses, they dress up in funny outfits. So me and Olivia dressed up as dads. So that's why my outfit looks like that. And that picture there is a picture of the catering company. We had tacos don Pepe, which was so good. And we hope that they can... That was the first time we've had catering at a school dance, so that was a big deal. Okay, next up, on Valentine's Day, Troy, our mascot, delivered carnations around the school. So some lucky people got a carnation from a secret admirer, or a friend, or a coworker. And it was a really, really special way to celebrate Valentine's Day. This is very exciting. Our baseball team has been invited to play at the Oracle Park where the San Francisco Giants play. It's a very big deal. And that's a picture of the whole team there. And I believe the way you get a ticket to the game is you purchase a ticket for a Giants game, and then that gives you free entry to the Petaluma High School baseball game. So I'm planning on going. I'm a big baseball fan. Hope to see some of you there. Next up, our Trojan Broadcast Channel program. They are going to Florida next week for the annual Student Television Network Conference where it's basically a competition. So a bunch of schools from around the country always go to one place. And they get there and they have 24 hours to make a film. And they go all around the city and filmed last year's in Los Angeles. And they go all around the city making a film, and they come back the next day, and that's how it's judged. It's really cool. That's a picture of them on their trip last year, it was in Long Beach. So yeah, we're wishing them luck. Right now, our girls varsity soccer team is at their semifinals in Castro Valley. That's happening like right this moment, which is really exciting. That is a very big accomplishment. They've had a really good season overall. They've won most of their games. This Friday and Saturday, our drama department is having a show called Almost Maine. There's all the information there. There's tickets at the door if you're interested in going. There are three showings in the Petaluma High School multi. I know this is a big deal because I think from COVID, they had a lot of issues of having these productions put on. So this is the first time they've had a big production in a few years, so it's very exciting. Okay, yes. Next up, this is a project I'm a part of, as well as Olivia, Trojan Quarterly. This is our ASV's annual mock beauty pageant talent show that we put on to raise money for prom. So this year, as you can kind of see, the theme is Saturday Night Fever, so disco 70s. That is the official poster for the show. You can see they're decked out in their fun outfits. Here's some more info. So recently, we all went to Cal Skate to film like a promotional video as well as some content for the show. And all the guys were on roller skates, dancing to 70s music. It was so fun in their outfits. And we were getting some weird looks from other skaters, but it's okay. And that's a picture of them attempting to do the lift from Dirty Dancing, which we might have in the show. So if you want to see that, make sure to come, March 8th at 7:00 PM. TQ, Trojan Quarterly, oh, March 8th, 7:00 PM. Tickets sold at the door. Okay, and then we're also having a fundraiser this Friday called Splash a Senior where all the contestants of the show will be sitting and you can pay to basically throw water at them. So we're hoping to get some money from that. Or for $5, you can throw ice water at them. So that's going to be interesting. And that's a picture of them at the Winter Rally, which we recently had as well. And that's where we revealed the theme of the show and introduced the cast. And also recently, our cheer team, our recent Hollywood Bowl national champions, which is a very big accomplishment. Yes. That is a very big competition. Lots of teams compete, and they competed in a pretty advanced division. So that is a very big accomplishment. And then upcoming, we have one of our own wrestling team members, Spencer Madison Castillo, is going to a state tournament in Bakersfield, which is pretty exciting because there's going to be a lot of people there as well. Those are some photos from the wrestling season. They've had a pretty good season overall. Yeah, they're doing good. And then this is a video link I was hoping someone could play back there. This is something that our engineering program created. So yeah, we'll have a look.
My name is Keith Benson. I am the automotive and manufacturing instructor here at Petaluma High School and the department chair for our engineering. Electrical is everything these days, and everything has a computer, a circuit. I mean, your seat has its own computer, your windows. And today's technicians need to know how to diagnose all the circuits, need to know Ohm's Law. And the switch vehicle is an interesting and easy way for the students to learn about all aspects of that and learn the diagnosis for electrical vehicles. The nice thing about the relay lab kit, it's very compact. I mean, you could potentially put, you know, 30 of these in a classroom versus the amount of space it takes up for an actual entire switch car. This is a lot less intimidating than a car. You put it in front of a student, that can be very intimidating the first time they, you know, have to take apart a controller. Where this is, I think, a little more friendly. It's just a smaller version of the entire vehicle. So the concepts of what they're learning is the same, except you don't get to drive it. I look at our students, and they have lived in a two-dimensional world, computers I'm talking about and tablets. You get them out in the shop, and a lot of times their first experience in what I call the 3D world, manipulating objects in three-dimensionals, cutting things. So they learn a ton with project-based learning. And I think the trend is going more that direction, especially with this generation. They're very interested in using their hands, learning about trades, and this stuff fits right in with that. As far as the relay kit specifically, they can take what they learn here and apply it to, you know, commercial applications, robotics, buildings, et cetera, networks. It all goes hand-in-hand. The switch relay kit and car gives us that opportunity with something that is, I would say, low stakes compared to the cost of like, say, a Cybertruck or something, you know, where you got $100,000 electric vehicle. The cost is effective for education. I would recommend it to every auto shop that wants to teach modern equipment, you know, our modern technology, modern transportation. This is the direction things are going. Electric cars are here to stay, they're getting better and better. But the fundamentals, electricity, as far as I know, aren't going to change. So if they can learn this, it can take them throughout their entire career.
All right, I believe that is it for Petaluma High School.
That is great.
I think you should sell that to that company and have them use it for their marketing. Okay, so good evening, everybody. Erica Noon again, from Casa. One of the things we have coming up this Friday, ABC News is coming to do a story on our hatchery, Mr. Hugh Bucker's program, so there's a few pictures there of some of our kids doing field work. Right now, they're working on tagging fish before they release them back into the creeks. And that's what they're doing the story on, so that'll be this Friday. Oh, I have the clicker. Oh, wrong way. Thank you. Okay, another one of our science department work that's happening is one of our teachers, Ms. Kula, is having a guest speaker from Medtronic to come and do some test air testing from around the campus. But that's also coming this Friday, so I didn't have any pictures yet because it's in the future. Or Thursday, sorry, but these are some of the photos from her class as they're learning about outer space and how everything works around us. Environmental science. In the sports world, our wrestling team has been doing amazing. They're not done yet, they're headed to state. Couple highlights, Camden Bushy with 100 wins and 100 pins, took fifth in NCS. He's one of our seniors. And then Kayla Ziedler, she's one of three Ziedlers that have come through our women's wrestling program. And she took second for NCS, and she is a third-time Vival champ. We're very proud. Our boys' basketball team is up and coming. They took first place in the Vine Valley Athletic League. They were tournament winners, and they are still playing. I think they're still in playoffs. They're still live. Cheer, I didn't get them out a second photo, but that's okay. Our girls went to Nationals, and they took, I think, 14th out of 29. It's around the middle of the pack, but they did win their local NCS tournament. And spring sports are up and coming. There's some track and field, and softball, and esports, which starts in the spring. Really excited to get those started. And then just from today, 10,000 Degrees hosted in our multi. A really kind of inspiring opportunity for our kids to learn how to pay for college. It's all about money matters and how they can take themselves where they want to go. A little shout-out from our boosters, First Annual Crab Feed. There's Luann with a crab hat. Yep, yep, we forced her to come and hang out with us. I think that was even technically before she started. So, and that's all I got for you all today.
Lots happening. Okay, I think we're going to take... Thank you all for coming, and we're going to take a short break, five minutes, and come back. I don't have my phone. We'll be back at 6:35. Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone, we are back. And we are going to have comments from the public on special recognition, reports, presentations, and non-agendized items. Before I begin that, I'm going to read our board language on public comment. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a three-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter. Under Government Code, Section 54954.3A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period, which is now. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy, BP 1312.1, specific to complaints against employees. You can submit your input in writing, by email, or other means to the superintendent, board president, me, mcloud@petk12.org, board members, or other designated staff member. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board... Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. Okay? And now we will continue. So I believe we have Kaya LeKirschner, is that right? And Paige Lesman? Lisa, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Paige Listma.
Hi, I'm Kylie Kircher. We're, we're both juniors. I'm ASP secretary and she's an ASP.
Yeah. Um, as you guys know, we have advisory next year in the new Petaluma High schedule. And we propose that advisory should be optional for seniors in good academic standing. Um, and here's why.
First of all, seniors, seniors have learned, learned to manage their time outside of school.
If they haven't learned, leading into college, trade school or other workforce, learning to managing our time outside of school um, is necessary.
With seniors being the only class allowed in off period, we should be able to choose if we come back on campus or not between off periods and advisory.
With a senior class being the first senior class to be limited to one off period or TA period, like we have to be on campus for six periods. Um, we have a lot less flexibility in our schedules, um, than any other prior classes at Petaluma High.
To add on, having an optional advisory will give much more time outside of school to students who have internships, jobs or community college classes, which are all necessary leading into adulthood.
Many seniors are in varsity sports and leading clubs, including both of us. So having um, more time outside of school where we can choose to time manage, um, would be really helpful with um, AP classes, planning out for clubs, going to the gym, getting part-time jobs and, um, meeting with people and planning for our future. Um, that's all we have. Thank you. Uh, is there any questions? Are we allowed to do that? Okay, uh, sorry.
No, we can't do that unfortunately. You bring up many good points. Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Great. Okay, now we have adoption and approval of the budgets. May I have a motion?
The agenda.
The agenda. Did I say budget?
Yeah.
I moved, I moved to adopt and approve the agenda. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those post? Motion passes, passes. Uh, now we have reports on the activities and correspondence of school board members. Um, last week, pretty much every, uh, there was no schools. So, um, for most of us. Um, so we have several, actually. We have the LCAP meeting, uh, office hours at Petaluma Junior High School and at Casa Grande High School. The PHS Music Fundraiser at the Mystic and La Cien Forum on Mental Health and Bridging the Resource Divide uh, with Technology. And Petaluma Blacks for Community Development, Black History Month Community Event. And Sam, uh, Safe Routes to School Walk Audit at Grant School. Uh, does any school board member want to comment on that? Anything?
Um, the jazz night was so much fun. Our band was amazing. And then they had the other lady gun held after and she was great. It was a great night. So.
Thank you. I was just gonna say our student board members went to the jazz also, which is great. And at the Mystic, is that the first time they've done that?
No.
Is it?
Yeah, it's, it's a, a major fundraiser for.
It's great. I love the Mystic. Okay. Okay. And so our student board members uh, went to the jazz band performance and, uh, TQ practices. And then Ava is going to present hers. Um, I just asked her to do it.
So I, for the last three years, have been, for some people who don't know, have been working on an organization in our community called the Positivity Project that me and some of my best friends like started together. And over the last few years, we did this through the organization HOSA, which is for future health professionals. And we got to compete in healthcare related events. And, um, with people against, first you do it with people in the state and then you do, if you make it in the top five or top three, you get to go to the international conference. And last year, after reporting all of the success and amazing things that we got to do for our community, we got third place out of everyone in California. So that was really exciting. And this year, we wanted to keep that streak going. And so we're competing in a new event about public health education. And so where we pick a specific area that we could see we need to like educate people in a specific demographic in our community. And we decided that we, because the whole reason we started the positivity project was because of drug overdoses that we've witnessed on campus. And we decided that our project this year for public health education would be to go and present to all of the freshman classes, all the Success 101 and Human Interaction courses about drug abuse, mental health and like the fentanyl crisis that's happening in Sonoma County. And, um, this was a really awesome experience because not every student gets to go and talk to this many people at once. And as a student myself and going off into adulthood, just being able to like know that I've planted a seed for these kids, like hopefully now it's their decision to do what they will with that information. So I am hopeful that they'll make good choices. And, um, beyond that, in a more exciting and positive, happy aspect, our HOSA chapter at Casa Grande has, is preparing for the next round of judging for our state leadership conference this year. Um, my team, as we created a like twenty page portfolio about all of our planning and the learning that we've done for our community and why we think, um, like dual diagnosis and substance abuse is something really important to teach freshman students about. We got, um, what's the word? We got judged very well, apparently. And they want to see another submission from us, the judges. So hopefully we'll just keep going and get a medal again. That would be cool. And last thing is our Casa Grande Interact Club. We work very closely with Rotary Club. And we officially got approved on campus and we're able to purchase a peace pole to build for our school. And so that is essentially like a big pole and it's very cool. And it has the word like, I think it's like peace or peace beyond earth, um, in a bunch of different languages. And so we chose the languages that we see are like for students that want to be, or like we know should be represented on campus. We have it in English and we have in Spanish and French and then a Native American language. And I think we did Arabic and Braille too. So it's all really cool. Yeah, it's really, so I don't know. I didn't, I was hoping we could do Braille. That was my idea. And then they were like, oh yeah, that's possible. Actually, I didn't think it would be. But so that's really exciting. That's all I have to share.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our student board members are, uh, thank you. Okay. Uh, now comments from the public on consent items. Nobody commenting on our consent agenda. Okay. See, none. We go to number fourteen, approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
I moved to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, I do. Under contracts, Jason, it's contract, um, number two, four, two, five for Western Governors University. And, um, I just had a question about it, uh.
Maddie, which item are you on?
I am on, I'm sorry, uh, fourteen point two point one, under the consent agenda.
Okay.
And it's under contracts.
The ratification for contracts.
Yeah.
It's like under MOUs, I think.
Yeah. Yes. Oh yeah, you have to scroll down to it. Clinical Experience Agreement.
Um, this is for, um, this one is for an agreement for, uh, student, like for a student teaching, like an internship placement for, uh, for clinical experience. So I'd have to pull up that. We've had a couple of them come through. I'd have to pull up which that one specifically was, but it was a pretty standard agreement around partnering with the Western Governors University to provide a, an experience for one of their students in our, in our system.
So then it has like a mentor teacher and, um, and a clinical supervisor. Are those our employees?
It oftentimes, uh, oftentimes the mentor is and the super, the clinical supervisor is usually from the university. So, yeah.
So I'm assuming it's an online university?
Um, that one.
Or at least that program.
What's that?
Or at least that program.
Uh, I have to look to be sure, I have to look back and be sure to, on that specific one. So I'm sorry, I don't have that answer for you right now.
Um, but it's okay. I was just curious as to how it was different from our, our, um, our credential program at SSU.
Yeah, the, yeah. And most of like the, um, most of the credential, we're usually, most of our people are through Sonoma State. We have a couple of you, like this is one university. We have a couple of, of these universities that we just have one offs, like, uh, one student is with that university and wants to place with us. So the, sometimes we have these specialty agreements that we've done just to provide a space for one student or just a small number of students. The, uh, the majority of them are through Sonoma State.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Um, okay. I call the question and the vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
No? All right, that is passed. Comments from the public on action items. I have one, two, three, four. Oh. Yours isn't on.
I think I should have gone.
I think you should have gone earlier. I'm sorry. I'll put you first. Okay. So we'll start with, uh, this is on the action items. Anything on the action agenda? Okay, Sandra, you can be first. Sandra Larson. Oh yeah. Oh, I should say that if you want to, sorry. I should say that if you want to speak, then there's cards in the back and, and, um, it looks like you all get three minutes. So we're good.
I'm about a month late, but I wanted to come and acknowledge the, for me is amazing thing that the board did with the help of Amanda, our CPO. That's getting the adult transition program their own campus. I feel like we should have had a huge banner up. Sorry, I don't know. For, as long as I can remember, that's been such an issue. They're at Lucasey at the junior high as adults, places with no restrooms and not being treated the way students really should be treated. And I so appreciate Amanda's leadership when she heard about it and finding a way to make it happen and the board for making it happen. That program is amazing. If you don't know what they do, they take students who just need life skills to build a much better life. And this program gives them that to have the fullest life they possibly can. So just thank you, thank you, thank you. And when, when it opens, we'll all have a party.
Thank you. Um, okay. Uh, so now we go on to action items. My apologies. The, oh, the public comment. Yes. Okay. Um, Diana Cannon on behalf of Katie Gill.
Hello, everyone. Uh, as you know, I'm Diana Cannon and Katie Gill could not be here in person. She's watching via Zoom. And I was brave enough to stand up here. So, um, she, first of all, she says, thank you for hearing our concern regarding the proposed elimination of a PCS nurse and working to find the funds to keep our invaluable Nurse Monica. Our community appreciates your efforts and we continue to urge you to keep down the path of not cutting a PCS nurse position. So thank you. Next, I emailed last week encouraging the board to look deeper into numbers at each site before cutting Ms. Carmen from our site. I hope you were able to do your diligence to help give you a better idea of how to vote for tonight's budget. Please remember McKinley and PAX are two schools on one campus. TK through eighth. McKinley is a Title One school. McKinley and PAX hover around five hundred students. And our community and staff rely on having a full-time bilingual secretary. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very. Uh, Shayna Friedman.
Good evening. My name is Shawna Friedman. I'm in my seventh year as a school counselor at Casa Grande High School and in my third year serving on the PFT negotiations team. I'm here tonight to acknowledge the efforts of the Budget Advisory Committee and to urge the board to support the committee's recommendations. The committee made these difficult recommendations with the intent to preserve staff that works directly with students. This year at Casa Grande was without a school counselor for several months as one of my colleagues went out on maternity leave. Recently, another colleague was ta, forced to take an unexpected leave. The absence of any staff member working directly with students is immediately felt by the entire campus community, especially for roles such as school counselors, school psychologists, mental health counselors and school nurses who do not have subs, sub pools readily available to cover absences. When we look at what positions cannot be sacrificed, I can sympathize with the intention to preserve management positions, leadership roles that direct the vision of our district. But when we focus too much on preserving that vision, we lose sight of who is actually accomplishing the task at hand. In the past year, my team has been pulled away from work with students to be trained to use a college and career platform that we have already been using for years. We've been interrupted during our busiest registration season to gather information to be used for district social community, social media communications. Our registrar has been asked to resubmit data that was correct the first time after a district hired consultant undershot our enrollment. We forget that the people on the front lines are often the best resources because we are the ones doing the work every single day. And vision is nothing without the human capital necessary to execute it. This past week has been one of the most tragic in recent memory. If the daily fear of ICE raids wasn't enough trauma, neighboring districts have experienced loss of students to fentanyl overdose and suicide. In a time when we need more caring adults working directly with students, Santa Rosa City Schools plans to cut dozens of certificated and classified staff providing direct services. Our district cannot afford to make the same mistake. The lives of our students are at risk. A few months ago, I received an email from a grandmother of one of my former students thanking me for the kindness, effort and time I made to support her grandchild while a student at CASA. One of the reasons I was able to support her grandchild was that our school nurse, Kristen, was onsite at CASA Grande and administered Narcan after the student overdosed in our bathroom. This student is alive today because of one person working directly with students. If you choose to cut frontline staff tonight, know the lasting impact will be felt more by students than by the budget. The risk of our students is too great. Thank you.
Thank you. Pod? Pod siders?
Uh, good evening. Um, I'm also on the Budget Advisory Committee and, uh, we agreed, uh, as a consensus that we would um, try to avoid at all costs, any student facing positions. Uh, we submitted our recommendations and they were rejected. We came back a second time. Uh, these meetings are kind of like bloodletting. Uh, we look at each other and we think, okay, well, we're gonna have to cut you. No, we're gonna have to cut you. Um, it's a terrible position, uh, for us, uh, to, to negotiate. Uh, yet we were able to come to a consensus, site admin, classified, certificated, PFT, CSCA and members of the public. It's an achievement. And yet, when we resubmitted a second time, again, the answer was no. Our cuts would not, our, our plan for the cuts would not be accepted. It's very difficult to state this diplomatically. But I think it does need to be stated. I believe that if the board does not approve our cuts, then the board is going to have to be able to justify to the public I believe that if the board does not approve our cuts, then the board is going to have to be able to justify to the public how the position of the superintendent on leave rejected these cuts is traveling the world to some extent on PCS budget money. And that person can reject our work? The anger, the frustration, the concern, the feelings of ill faith are spreading throughout all of the people who work in the district. You have an awesome responsibility if that's what you're going to do. As chief negotiator, we often talk about trust, building trust, maintaining trust. I'll put it as simply as I can. This is your time to prove it.
Thank you, Todd. Tiana?
Hello, my name is Tiana Grusbeck. I'm a parent in the district as well as a teacher at San Antonio High School. Um, I also participated in the budget advisory meetings over the last two years and gathered that from that everything was student-based centered first. So I too would like to echo some of what has been said before me. Um, is what is our priority as a district? We all like to think it is the children and now is the time to act, but it is for our students. Therefore, my question to you as a board is when making budget, budget decisions to key positions, are you making student-first centered decisions? Or are you making cabinet, district office first decisions? What is your priority? Thank you.
Thank you, Tiana. Andy? Trader?
Good evening, board. Uh, I was also on the Budget Advisory Committee. I've been up here a bunch of times. Uh, I submitted a detailed letter on why we need to keep the Coordinator of Career Technical Education position. The bottom line, and I, and I won't go over everything again, that's testified last meeting by Kathy Goodacre, the CEO of the Career Technical Education Fund. The person in that position has brought in $4 million to this district. And um, instead of getting rid of this position, why don't you just focus him on raising more money and closing the budget gap? That would make sense and uh, that would be a good decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak and did not fill out a card? Okay, Deb Fox.
Yes, hi, you all. Uh, my name is Deb Fox. I'm a parent uh, of a freshman at CASA and I also happen to be the city's Climate Action Manager. Uh, I'm here tonight because I was actually participating as a parent in the groups to give feedback on the ways in which we can support our students most effectively. Uh, and it relates to the fact that we do need grant writers. People like Dan that go and the CTE coordinator that fund the very work that supports our students to be able to, to have a career pathway, to go from school all the way to the local jobs is such an important element as it relates to our city's sustainability as a community so that kids can stay here in our community. And that is what that position is helping to do directly related to the work that I do as the Climate Action Manager, which is making sure that we have local jobs to, to make our community sustainable as it relates to our streets, to our energy efficiency, all those different elements. Those are one of the ways that I have been working with him at the city in that position. And so it's a really important position, as I know, working in the city, having people that have the ability to fund themselves through grant writing is priceless. And that is the conversation that I heard directly participating in the LCAP discussions, excuse me if I use the wrong acronym. But those elements to be able to have people fund themselves is not something that happens. It does, that to understand the nuances of the district and to be able to then create those grant opportunities and partnership opportunities are things that you can't replace and that hiring consultants to do that stuff is very expensive way to much to do that. So I just want to really advocate for that position as it relates to our whole community being able to be supported. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, alright, so we're gonna go on with our action items at this point. Um, our first action item is 16.1.1 Resolution on Women's History Month. Um, would someone like to read, do you want to read it, Ellen? Great.
Whereas the, the origin of Women's History Month dates back to 1978 in Santa Rosa, California, when the Education Tax Force of the Sonoma County Commission on the Status of Women planned a Women's History Week celebration during the week of March 8th to correspond with International Women's Day. And whereas Women's History Month is celebrated in March to highlight the contributions of women throughout history. And whereas women of all backgrounds and identities have served as leaders of every major social change movement, including civil rights movements, la- labor movements, and LGBTQIA+ movements. And whereas women have played a unique role throughout his, American history by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force and being key to the establishment of men, of many philanthropic educational and cultural institutions. And whereas these, despite these contributions, the impact of women leaders has been consistently overlooked in media, history books, and academic curriculum. And whereas the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education recognizes that all students need opportunities to understand the common humanity underlying all people. And whereas the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education is committed to enhancing ec- committed to enhancing equity, inclusion, and diversity in curriculum and remains dedicated to providing schools with resources and supports to effectively implement the history social science standards and build civic engagement amongst students. Now the, excuse me, now therefore be it resolved that Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School District's Board of Education does hereby recognize the month of March as Women's History Month.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? I'll move to approve.
I will second.
All those in, oh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, uh, 16.1.2 Approval of Resolution 2425-36 of the Board of Education of Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School, reducing and discontinuing particular kinds of services by an additional 5.4 FTE for the 25, 26 school year. Jason?
Yes. So, uh, just as a reminder, particular kinds of service is a reduction for certificated staffing. Um, there were two, there's two different PKS resolutions on here. This first one represents um, the reductions that went from budget advisory to cabinet into the superintendent and represented those certificated positions that came from that recommendation from the superintendent and cabinet uh, to reach that target of $2 million.
Okay. So what I thought we'd do is have every board member uh, have questions of uh, Jason? And uh, and you know, if you choose to speak, you can or not. Ryan, would you like to start?
Uh-huh.
You want to pass?
I'll pass to start.
Okay. Caitlin?
I can start, um. I know one of the things we had discussed last time is looking for other funding to try and keep some of the positions that are named here and on the next resolution. But we can continue to do that even if we were to approve these resolutions with these positions. That doesn't preempt us from looking for outside funding in the, in the future before, in the next two months.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. And I tried to put in the, in the situation there that um, that we did hear the board, that there were some specifically, we heard from the board pretty unanimously about the nurse position and the desire to, to preserve that one. And then some, some discussion on the C, on the CTE coordinator position. Uh, so we had put that in there. When we do this resolution, we are, we are putting it on notice, but we have until May 14th to actually find additional funding. The request was, can we find other ways to fund those positions? And so we're suggesting that we put those on the list now and then between now and then, uh, between now and May 14th, find that additional funding so that we don't actually uh, need to move forward on those positions the board wants to preserve.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, Ellen?
Actually, Kate, Caitlin said what I was gonna say, so great minds.
Joanna?
Um, so I also have the same question that Caitlin had, so thank you Caitlin for reading all of our minds. And then I also, um, I know we had talked about potentially using Title One funding. Um, so what? I'm not sure if that's the appropriate use for that funds for the nurse. So then how is it determined which funds are going to be used potentially for each position? And then um, will that come back to the board as well um, to decide on which funding source will be used for each position?
Yeah, I think that we interpreted what we heard from you was that you wanted some, there were some questions about title, Title One or not Title One. And so our interpretation was that there, the board wanted further discussion on what is actual, exact funds would be used for that. Um, so that's what we are anticipating was to come back with possibilities and, and as we are able to determine those and then uh, get direction from you on how we move forward.
I think my main concern with using Title One funds is taking from the students. Um, if the positions that we choose to save aren't um, serving Title One schools, so then how does that get determined? And then also, what is the implication if we use Title One funds to save position, then how does that impact all of the sites and how they serve the students directly?
Yeah, we did, we did hear those questions and, and we'll be able to come back with, with more information for discussion for the board. We weren't prepared to to answer those questions at this point, um, which is why we didn't suggest another funding source because we know that there's more work that needs to be done in that regard.
Thank you.
My concern about using Title One funds is it's a federal program and we don't know what the feds are gonna do. We have an idea. So trying to put a position based on Title One funds when our fearless leader may be cutting those. So that would, that was one of my concerns is we can say, yeah, we're gonna use it. And then if we run out of funds or that we don't have those funds anymore, then we're back in the same place. So I would like to find a different funding source.
Okay, thank you.
And then just by understanding to build up what Ellen was asking, would, it sounds like this is carryover Title One funds? Is that right? And I'm looking at you either.
Yeah, potentially, uh, you know, depending on how much carryover we have at the end of the year, we'll, we could support um, um, a position. Again, it would have to follow um, the restricted requirements under Title One uh, and, and you know, provide the services to the schools that are receiving the funds, but um, we anticipate there'll be carryover that could support it. But at, you know, at this time, we'll, we'll have to dig deeper and, and make sure that it, it passes everything.
And if it is carryover, then it's just for one year. So then a year from now, we could potentially be in this position or if like Ellen was saying that the federal government shuts down the Department of Ed, which looks like they're moving that direction, then it could be a greater impact potentially.
Thank you. Yes, Ryan?
Yeah, circle back on. So I thought the last board meeting, we, we gave pretty clear direction that we did not want to cut uh, the nurse position. Um, so I'm disappointed to see it in the, in the resolution here, even though we still have, you know, we're undecided on exactly what source of funding is going to be, but I do think it, it does say it's a value statement and it's direction from the board that we wanted to be clear that we wanted to keep this position. Um, so let's circle back. If it's not Title One, we previously first discussed that potentially a LMFT could be moved into, I believe it was like the Medicare or what was the funding mechanism? Yeah.
Medi-Cal.
Medi-Cal, sorry. Medi-Cal funding, um, uh, opening up funding for the nurse position. Is that still available? As a potential, you know, avenue?
I would, I defer to Esmeralda on that, um, on how many we can move, be moved in that. Well, because we've, we've moved some already. Right? That was part of the, part of the original movement from that recommendation from the Budget Advisory Committee.
So I think what was um, discussed last meeting was that there would potentially be uh, funding in there for one year, but that the committee based on the Medi-Cal reimbursement, um, and what it, what is possible ongoing, there was enough to cover one LMFT ongoingly. And potentially could for one year use some of the um, some of the funds that are in that pot. But there, there wouldn't be necessarily the capability of funding ongoingly.
Right, understood. Um, so my question is for the resolution, I, I mean, I would, I still believe that we should not have included the, the nurse position in the reduction. I know that we have two different potential pots of, or you know, I think sources of funding at this point. What is the problem, I, I would say of um, including the nurse position? Or like, why is the nurse position still in the, you know, request for uh, elimination at this point?
So the nurse position is, is, was still included at this point because at this, at this time, we hadn't identified what that other source of funding was. We heard there was discussion about going with Title One, and then we also heard concern from some of the board about whether we should use Title One. So we were, didn't have clear direction from the board on where we would, and how we would move that position over from our last meeting was our, how we interpreted the direction we got from there. We understood the board's in, in desire and intention to keep that position. Um, and it was left on this resolution until we knew that we have, what, what funding that source that would be able to support that. Obviously, as the board, um, you, in the past, like, you have the authority to amend the resolution and, and remove that, but we didn't feel that we had clear enough information about how we would fund that position to still meet the, the target that was set of $2 million and come with a reasonable resolution for you.
I mean, that's how I understood it as well, that we were gonna look to a different funding source, but until we had identified the funding source, it was gonna stay on. But I don't know if anyone else understood it differently.
I understood it like that as well. That we're gonna look for other funding sources and we need to identify them and we, it needs to be a long term. I don't want to have to go through this every year. Um, you know, so finding an alternative funding source, that would be more than a year. Is, I think, important to maintain. I mean, I want to keep the position as well. I, I don't want to cut any of these positions actually. But we do have to identify how we're gonna pay for it before we can assume we can pay for it.
Are you, you feel, do you have more questions or do you feel?
I think this is a, an important enough position that if we do have one year off funding as like, at a very like emergency, like minimum. Like we heard from the parents, there's a lot of concern from the increased uh, need uh, in time uh, and attention on diabetic students. We've had a tenfold increase within the, the school district. We have really a, we have a tragic citation that almost ended in a death. It was just mentioned by one of the teachers. And we have had two students up in Santa Rosa who passed away this, last weekend. Um, I think that it is a statement of our values and the importance. Parents rely on us and, and keeping their kids safe is the biggest, I think, uh, hurdle and jump like a parent can do. I just, I'm a uh, parent of a, of a, almost a three and five-year-old and dropping, you know, your kid off at TK uh, for the first time is, you know, it's a, it's a, and you're trusting yours, you know, everything in your life to someone you really haven't met. And you trust the school district will be there to support your students and being sure that they are safe. Um. Um, I think that, uh, you know, we'll go into this in discussion, but, um, I'm not supportive of eliminating the position, the nurse position in the resolution.
We did hear from a lot of parents from McKinley and I absolutely more than empathize and can't imagine the stress of having a diabetic child. But we, I have also heard from folks in the Pen Grove community that they didn't have a nurse come visit their campus at all for two months. So I, I don't know if that's true. That's just what I've heard, but I the, I guess my question really is, what can we have health techs and other staff help support for? Um, just to make, like, even if we do have four nurses, like, how can we make sure that there is health tech support so that nurses can freely travel to all of the, um, sites?
Uh, I, I, I'm not sure I'm understand, is your question, can we increase?
I think whether or not we, uh, cut a nurse right now, um, I think it's that I want to know regardless that there are other staff that can administer Narcan that can at least watch a diabetic student's insulin and support that if a nurse does need to go to another campus for a few hours.
Um, yeah, no, I can't speak to the, to the Narcan. Um, I, I can't say that we, we have, uh, we have diabetic support with our classified staff, um, in place. Uh, one of the things that was brought up, I think, before in public comment and is true is that when a classified staff is out, a lot of times nurses have to cover those positions. So like if, if the, if we have someone that is out for a couple of weeks for a, a medical leave, like there's no, not that time, there's no, there's no classified coverage. So we do have coverage in place. It's, it's a matter of the depth of that coverage and that the nurses are often called into, um, to support when they're, when they're not, when they're not there. Yeah, as in addition to, I, I don't, I can't speak to, you know, Esmeralda or the nurses could speak to all their duties. I, I'm sure they have other things and they are probably covering some of the diabetic support in addition to our classified staff. But I do know that that's a very, uh, big pressure point is that when classified staff are gone, we don't have sub, we don't really usually have sub diabetic support classified staff, a nurse goes and supports them.
Yeah, I would just echo what Jason is saying. Our nurses always, they are the point people. Uh, we, yes, we have our diabetic aides or and some health assistants that are in some of the school offices. But if they're ever absent, it's always, and our nurses are always overseeing insulin levels. Even if they're at the other site, they're always overseeing what is happening with our diabetic students and our medically fragile students.
Um, I would also, and I don't know if this is along those same lines, but I know in some of the responses from President Cloud, there was talk at one point of having coverage, like working at the, at one point, there was conversation with CSEA to have, um, hire a health assistant or, or a health tech to oversee, um, some of the diabetic support. If we weren't able to fund the, to keep this 1.0 position. So that's, sorry, that's point, part one of my question. And then part two, um, like Ryan was saying at the last meeting, it was mentioned that at one point there was one diabetic student. Now there's 10. Do we know which sites and which ones would need coverage? Are they all at McKinley?
There's a couple of questions. Um, now it's okay. So, um, so your first question was about, so we have, we, we don't, we aren't budgeting to increase at this time, our, 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 our support, what we have an agreement with CSEA, we have come to agreement on and are working through ratifying that processes is that starting July one. Right now, our support is organized in that classified staff that are supporting diabetic students are hired in as instructional assistants and then given a stipend instead of hiring them in as health assistants, which would be, and our plan is to, to move those positions to the office. So they're giving overall health support rather than being an I in a classroom and, and supporting a student with that that needs diabetic care, having, hiring them in as health assistants that would be in, in the office and provide diabetic su- support for those students and, um, other health needs as their schedule allows for the school in general. So it's a shift of their, of their job title and that kind of how they operate within the day. Still, the task of supporting the diabetic students would remain the same. So it's not, to be clear, it's not an increase. We're not at this point discussing an increase or budgeting an increase of that staffing level. So the, the staffing level of classified to support diabetic students at this time isn't planned to increase. And you had a second question?
There was also a question about the, the number of diabetics across our sites. And we, they are more than just McKinley. We've got the diabetics across the ma- majority of our elementary sites or at, four out of seven at least. And so, and secondary, of course, yes.
And I think if we are discussing Title One funds, um, I would also like us to consider if we have till May fourteenth. Um, because Title One is specific to low income, English learners, students with disabilities, migrant, fostered homeless, et cetera. And so, um, just what we've heard about the support from the, the school secretary at, uh, McDowell, especially, not McDowell, sorry, McKinley. And especially at this time right now with people scared to come to school, people feeling disenfranchised because of their citizenship status or just fear in general. Um, I would ask that we look at that as well. I don't know if there's enough funds to preserve both positions, but I would also want that looked at. Um, and I understand that most sites have a 1.5 FT, which is why this position was looked at. But I just think at this time, we need to make sure that we're ensuring support for our folks who already feel marginalized in general in our community. And then even more so with the recent political landscape, so. Um, I mean, I hate for us to all fight for the same pot, but I think if we're gonna look at Title One usages, like English learners are specifically called out in Title One. So I would want that to be looked at as well. Um, and then I, I'll say this for future business, but I am gonna ask more about the CSEA and the just cause I'm still not clear. So, thank you.
Um, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting and so, um, I, I just have a clarifying question about the nurses and about how they, they rotate, right? So you don't have a nurse that's stationed at each site. They rotate through different sites. Are they, are there, um, are they responsible for different sites or do they all go to different sites? I'm, I'm kind of need some clarification about, and I'm sorry, I wasn't able to attend the last one.
So we look at distributing the number of students district wide in a way that, and we look at acuity levels as well. Um, and so that's why we have some nurses that are very focused on diabetic care because some of that work is concentrated at specific schools. And so, um, all of them have multiple sites. Um, we have one of our nurses that is at five, another that isn't at five, another that is at three with higher acuity levels, higher student enrollment at one of the schools, but they all hover around the same number. Um, and then if they have a little bit less on their caseload, so to speak, if their acuity levels are higher, for example, our nurse that oversees a lot of the diabetic care, um, that number might be a little bit lower, but the level of acuity and the need is much higher. And so, um, the nurse team does a really nice job of, of sort of distributing those needs, um, so that all of those medically fragile students, as well as all of the other, you know, vision and hearing screening, uh, medical 504s, all of the other responsibilities are also divvied up, um, as best as they can.
So what would be the impact of cutting a position in terms of that distribution?
So it would take us back to, um, the pre-COVID time. So it would basically mean taking about four to five schools and adding those to the three remaining nurses. So would, those nurses would have more, um, acuity levels and care to take, obviously students to take care of. Um, it'd just mean their caseloads are, are higher.
Okay, thank you. All right, yes.
Yeah, um, I wanna circle back and we jumped right into the questions. I wanna thank the staff, Jason, Esmeralda, uh, uh, Tony, um, Bree, like, and Amanda's on a work travel right now. Um, and Luanne, uh, this has been very long. I know Amanda was very, uh, uh, involved and spent a lot of time after our time with, uh, the all volunteer, um, you know, Budget Advisory Committee, so I wanna thank them as well. We are not disregarding. You set the foundation for this conversation and we are incredibly grateful for the hours and time that you put into this. Um, we, because of the work that I think the staff has done and again, our, the fantastic, you know, advisory committee, um, we are not in the position of some of our fellow school districts. You know, Sonoma Valley has just cut 33 full-time jobs and is closing a school. We've seen all the headlines, Santa Rosa, over 150 staff are being laid off and four schools, three and a half schools have been closed. Recon Valley, 65 full-time jobs being let go. We are very grateful to the community's support and to the staff for putting us in a position where these are tough choices, but it's not school closures. You know, we are very grateful. With that, if we go back to uh, right, right when COVID, so let's go 20, gosh.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, let's go 2020. Where are we in staffing compared to 2020? Like, have we seen an increase in support staff since then? Or have we seen a decrease?
Um, we have seen, we have overall have an increase in, in our staffing. We actually, one of the things the Budget Advisory Committee looked at was, um, we did, uh, Amanda's department did run a report that was showing staffing, um, staffing before and staffing after the numbers. The way that report read was a little misleading and confusing. Like, we were looking at it and I know that as we were talking as a group, like, why is this one like that? It was, it's tough because also some posi, I believe that also some positions have changed or those kind of things. I, I can, I can say that if I compare the budget, um, advisory discussions this year with the budget advisory discussions last year. Last year, we looked specifically at the positions that were added within from 2020 on. And there was a list and we started as a budget advisory with that list. Um, here were the positions that we added. Um, what is interesting is that, um, we cut some of those positions last year. There were still a lot of them remaining. And in those conversations, actually very few of those positions we added are, are on this list. Like a lot of the positions that, that, you know, I can think of, we had student advisors that we added at every school. We had, um, TOSA APs at our larger, um, elementary schools that needed more administrative support. We had, um, added, uh, other positions as well that are on that list. And, um, we, we were looking at the, the big picture, cause many of those, some of our mental health support. Um, the group and I think collectively felt that those needs are still, they're, they're not gone. Like, we added that because of the needs of COVID and, and they aren't, they aren't diminished. Even though we're back in person and all of that, some of those same needs are still there, which is what you as a board echoed at the last meeting. Um, so a long-winded answer to your question that we do have, I believe we do have more positions cause some of those positions that we added, we're, we're, we aren't even discussing about, about cutting. Um, but there's also, staffing is also dynamic, like we've added positions, we've eliminated positions. So it, it's a little bit tough to, um, when we look at the numbers, it, it, it's an interesting story. I, I think it doesn't, it's not a clear picture.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that explanation. And so where are we with the, the Budget Advisory Committee? Where are like, I would say, the differences between the resolution that's in front of us and the, uh, recommendations from the Budget Advisory Committee? Just so we're clear and on the record, where are the, the differentials?
Let me um, if you have that.
And, and real quickly, Jason, was this, was the fourth nurse added with COVID dollars?
Yes, the fourth nurse was added, um, cause we, all of a sudden when, you know, and, uh, with COVID came all kinds of, all kinds of monitoring, all kinds of oversight. Like, there was a, there was this huge spike and, and the nurses, I mean, the nurses are always working hard and during that time, they were working, they were working 14 hour days every single day. Like, it was, it was nuts, um, what our nurses were asked to do in that time. And, um, so they, it was added in COVID when we went to COVID.
Um, and those dollars are now gone. Even though the, the needs are the same.
Yes, um, so, so to, to your, to your question, Ryan, um, the original, the original, we shared, um, the original, uh, recommendations, the, the positions that were on the original recommendation that, um, we, that superintendent and cabinet, uh, recommended to retain was the, uh, current communications coordinator, a 1.0 FTE communications coordinator and a point six FTE VAPATOSA. So, um, the VAPATOSA is really spearheading, uh, our, our plan around VAPA and, and that work. Um, and what was added, what we, what was added was the, um, 1.0 FTE COVID funded nurse, which to be clear was shared that that was voted on and it reached majority, but did not reach a super majority. It, the, it didn't reach the consensus of the group. Um, it was a majority, but it was not a, it was not a super majority.
Um, I think also the LMFTs was on the original list, right? Two of them?
Two, we, that was in the original recommendation, we.
From the committee?
No, to move them, not to eliminate them, but to move their funding. So there's a, there's a savings, um, to the budget by moving them into restricted funding.
But, so to clarify, they were on the original Budget Advisory Committee's list, the LMFT, I mean, the MFT.
So we moved to LMFT into different positions, which created vacancies and we're proposing eliminating the vacancies. So we are eliminating the positions, but it's because the, but the support, LMFT support hasn't changed. Those, those people, like for one, we have a grant at McDow that has a bilingual, um, a bilingual coordinator and one of our, uh, LMFTs, uh, applied and took that position, which left a vacancy. And those two vacancies were the ones that we were recommending closing. So, um, the only, the other thing is, uh, we added the elimination of a COVID funded clo, uh, COVID funded floater custodian, which was vacant as well. And we are suggesting the, uh, elimination of gate, um, gate identification funds for testing, uh, Sipin subs and, and all that, which is about $20,000. So those were the, those were the changes that weren't part of the original, yeah, thank you, but it's the original, uh, recommendation.
So was the COVID funded nurse originally part of the recommendation from the Budget Advisory Committee?
It was not.
Not, not in any way, shape or form?
No, the original recommendation only brought back things that we, we got a little bit over $2 million with everything at a super majority. So as I mentioned, that, that was voted on and it didn't reach a super majority. It was removed from the, from the recommendations.
Wasn't, um, the CTE coordinator also reached a majority, but not a super majority?
No, that was a super majority.
Oh, it was? Okay.
The nursing, a- a- as I, I'm coming from my memory, but as I, my recollection is the nurse was the only position that was actually voted on that didn't, didn't reach a super majority. Um, all the rest of them, that the group had a very good working flow and, and a lot of dialogue and everything else. Um, I think that we voted on, as I recall, was pretty clear as a super majority.
Okay. I was wondering if we can't, so we want to make sure that, that we look at all possible sources of funding to retain them, to call back the nurse. If we can't find the funding by March fourteenth, is it? May, I'm sorry. Um, can we you know, bring, bring that position back in any case and just as a board, uh, directive to bring that back, even though we can't find separate funding for it? I'm just trying to figure out what would happen if we can't find the funding and what happens tonight if we pass this, um, resolution?
Yeah, I mean, the answer, the short answer is yes, you're the board. So if that's, if that's how you want to move forward, yes, you can. Um, I, I, I think that whether, so from the HR perspective, we notify any staff that are the, any, any staff that are in positions that we've identified, we notify them. the, any, any staff that are in positions that we've identified, we notify them by March fifteenth that they may be released and then we finalize by May fourteenth if we're directed not to, not to move forward on that, on that secondary finalization, whether for funding or in your case, if we didn't find funding, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't move forward in that position as then not reduced.
Okay, thank you.
And then can you talk about the alternative funding potentially for the CTE coordinator? I see that on here as well in the narrative.
Yeah, so, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, other possible fundings, particularly grants, and we've, we submitted some grants that could potentially fund this position in addition to other, under, other positions that we feel are, are critical, such as counseling and and some consultancies work around the, the work that the grant would, 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 would provide. So right now, because it's, we're just waiting on the results of that grant, we, it's hard to say and so we don't want to be too definitive about it. I, I mean, personally, I'm confident, but, but again, it's just waiting for the next two, three, four weeks before we we will finalize the results of the grant.
So are you waiting to hear back from, to see if you got the grant or is it like a budget revision to an existing grant to include that salary?
Yes. So right now, like, for example, the Golden State's Pathway Grant is, is is funding that we received, but, but we have to finalize the budget on it. And so that's what we've done is submitted a budget for that grant for, for approval.
And that grant allows for retaining the, the CTE coordinator?
Potentially. The, the work is aligned with the, the grant itself, so there may be some job description changes. There may be some HR technicalities that need to be in place, but, but yes.
Okay.
Great. All right. I just want to say I understand wanting to cut the communications position. I understand that that's a district level position. I really do hear everybody and their concerns and I, at the same time, I wish we didn't have to market our schools. I wish everyone just went to their public school and valued their public schools and we didn't have to freaking peddle all of the amazing things staff do. That position works a lot with enrollment. We're one of the only districts that is maintaining enrollment when so many other districts are losing enrollment. So I hear you, but I, I just want to say that as well. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, Ryan. Yeah. You know, to follow up, I mean, we didn't talk about that on the, you know, the differences between the budget advisor committee, committee and the recommendations from the cabinet. Was there any discussion about returning, you know, this to a classified position like it was, you know, back, you know, prior to? I don't know, it was twenty nineteen-ish, no, twenty twenty-two, I believe.
Yeah, I think, I think it probably was twenty twenty-two, maybe. I think you're right. I was there, there was, there was not discussion in a discuss, I mean, there was discussion about that. That wasn't the way that, that the recommendation came forward. I think the, the the view of the superintendent and cabinet was that the role as a certificated person with a lot of the work that we see being needed to be done has a good portion of it has to be with also working with principals on communication. We have over the last, as we've come out of COVID, the amount of emergencies at schools, threats, situations, evacuations, things that involve law enforcement, those type of situations. Communications coordinator has been very involved and it a certificated person with experience as a principal, I, I know, I know, knowing it as a classified position, that the role has changed. So both of them do very good work of what they're doing, but the, the focus has changed and so my understanding is, you know, how I see this is that the, the feeling is that is still a need that that position needs to be able to support the administrators in, in working with the public and, and addressing communication that goes out to the newspaper and, and families and that sort of thing. So it was discussed, but didn't, didn't go that way.
I would also say as a district, we do a lot more communication than we used to and that was a priority of our board.
Yeah, I know I spoke to this before. I think it's essential to have good communication. I ran on that when I was running for school board. That we had no good communication within our, that our district really didn't put any energy into that. I think it crosses a lot of different things and it does. It, it, it does kind of touch a lot of different areas. It touches students, it touches teachers, it touches sites, it touches all kinds of things. We have our Sonoma State promise, hopefully. And, but we've had all these eighth graders that then, I'm sorry. Yeah, they were eighth graders that went to Sonoma State and our coordinator organized all of that and, and it was really amazing. And then also all of the visits to our high schools so that our high schools now are growing instead of losing students. I just think that it's in, in this day and age where communication is where most people live on their phones, whatever, I think that we definitely have to have a communications coordinator. But I've spoken to that before for a lot of different reasons. I hate that it has to be. I mean, you know, obviously, none of us want to have this be an either or situation. It's
I would also like to say that prior to having a credentialed person, the coordinators mainly were, was involved with our social media presence and since then, the job has grown tenfold. And I, I agree with Maddie. I think that position touches a lot of different places. So it, and we talked about student face and, you know, she's organizing trips to colleges and trips to, for eighth graders to visit high schools and putting all that together. So I, I think that's one of the reasons why we wanted to keep that position.
All right. I think, are we ready to have a motion? Do you got, do you have anything that you?
Yeah, I'll start it off. I mean, I would, so for, let's see here, it's two, four, two, five, three, six. We are
We need a motion.
Right. So a motion to amend to remove the nurse position from the positions that are, will be eliminated.
Is it in that one?
Yes, three, six.
Right. Do I have a second? You do not have a second. So the amendment does not pass. Do I have an amendment? I mean, I'm sorry. I move to approve resolution two, four, two, five dash three, six as stated.
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Although, okay. I need a, a motion to approve resolution two, four, two, five dash three, seven.
Should we talk a little more about this one first?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So, all right. So we thought we had, but okay. Let us talk about that one.
Sorry, Maddie, we brought in the discussion organically some of those positions.
That's what I thought. I'm sorry. So that's why I was just kind of like, but if anybody has comments about this one, this would be two, four, two, five dash three, seven.
Uh, yeah. So again, I'm the new board member. So we've received a lot of public comments about how one, like a specific, you know, we are limiting one position as a category and they're tying it to a specific person. So can has that been like, is it, is that correct? Or are we going to, is the school district going to, or, you know, evaluate? You know, all the positions for like, again, like a rebalancing between the schools to ensure that there's correct support staff. So it doesn't necessarily mean this particular person. I'm a little confused by that.
Yeah, I know. That's a great question. So just to, just to back up one step, like, this one is, is the RIF. The other one is a PKS. This is the RIF, which is our classified staff. This was the classified portion of the budget advisory discussion. So to answer your question, Ryan, the, the we are eliminating positions and often those positions are located in a place. So this particular one, Secretary School Two is, is that position, there aren't a lot of Secretary School Twos. That one position is, the one point O was at and is currently at McKinley and at the committee was looking at overall staffing at the schools and seeing that whereas it's hard because every school is different. They're all different sizes. They have, they have different situations. Some schools are two schools in one. We have that at McKinley PAX. We now have that at McDowell. The McDowell has two, has a elementary that, and they have the new seventh and hopefully eighth grade next year program. We have Cherry Valley, which is a TK through eight, which is, I think at this point, our largest in enrollment. So there's all these different factors. When we looked at the staffing in the offices of the schools, this, this staffing was significantly higher than any other school. Most of our schools are about one and a half. Like Cherry Valley, for example, is a TK eight at about five hundred and some like, and there are one point five FTE in the office, you know, they have a, a office manager and they have a halftime secondary position. This school had two point five. So there are two parts. This one is, is needing to eliminate one some position and the second part is what you were mentioning about, about looking at how we're, how we're staffing across the board. We did that this year with our supervision at the sites. We looked at all of, all of the elementary sites and looked at what their supervision was compared to their enrollment. It was not, it was out of whack. So we, we readjusted and we did that also with the secondary schools and made some changes so that it was more in alignment. We, we, our next move was to do that with the office staff as well. So if we move forward with this, in addition to that, we would be looking at, at the, at the staffing to make sure that we do have some equity in staffing with the sites and it's not just their enrollment because some schools have higher needs. They have other populations of students that, that we might feel need more support in, in the office. So there's a lot of factors that go into that. So that would be the next.
That's very helpful. So to say post-analysis, you know, we are going to cut one position that's, looks like it's pretty much at this one site. But we could come back three months and, and the school would be like, okay, stuff is out of balance. We actually, you know, Cherry Valley and McKinley deserve two full-time off, you know, two full-time positions and then you'll work with our labor partners to, to balance that out and, and staff and is that what potentially like, you know, three, six months down the road?
Potentially, it's potential, like, we're really talking about July first, like, doing, doing, doing any movement for July first, but if, what, what, what it could look like is if we're eliminating one position. If we just eliminated and left it alone, we then have like one of our largest schools that actually has, I, as we heard in the public comment, like, they actually are two schools there with only one and a half people in the office, which some schools have like one point six eight and they're smaller. So, so we would definitely be going back to, to look at the staffing and rebalancing what that staffing looks like across all of them. Some of that is, is moving because we can't, we can move and move a person's assignment, but we can't, we can't really move part of their hours. We can't be reducing like, oh, sorry, you, you know, you're going to go down by two hours and we're going to give it over here. That isn't what we do. So it's a little bit of a combination of, of moving some positions and it might also be some, some readjustment through, when there's attrition. So there's some of that as well as, as making adjustments when positions change or people, people move into different spots.
But you just You talked about looking at the equity of staffing. And so I assume that's how this position ended up on this list, but how we actually, how did we actually look at that? And how do we continue to look at that moving forward when you're looking at all of the staffing? Because what I'm hearing is equality, like, everyone has to have a one point five instead of looking at actually like the needs of the school. So how are we looking at the equity of what that school actually needs? Because that's true equity. Because some people might need a two point five and someone else needs a one point five. So so I guess I'm wondering like if, how that got on the list? Was it just the equality or, and then moving forward, how are we looking at the equity of staffing in these schools?
That's a great question. And let me clarify, I the equity in staffing was not in this process. This process was just looking at, we were discussing. It wasn't even, it was looking at, we had, I, I think I don't know that it was explicitly stated, but I know the committee looked at, at, we left the additional administrative, so like, the administrative support at those three schools was left in place. And I think that the committee started looking at where, how do we, how do we make adjustments to accommodate that? And I think that was why we ended up with cuts that were at Cherry Valley at, classified cuts at Cherry Valley at Pen Grove and at McKinley. Another part was that it was so much more than any other school. The equity and, the equity in staffing piece is a formula that we use that takes into account not only enrollment, but also non, non-duplicated stu, like that student count. And there's an equation that we use. I think it's from, from cash. That is how you figure out the staffing based on mathematically, how you might identify the needs. That doesn't take into account things like, oh, we actually have two schools here or we have these other, these other interests, which we'd have to take into account on our own, but the, the mathematical part hasn't been done. That part does have a formula which accounts for that accounts for not only the number of students, but also what are the needs of the students?
Yeah, I think I would want to hear more about what are the needs of the schools. Like, I understand that these schools also have TOSAs, which by the way, we're also COVID-funded, so we might be looking at those next year too. But so were we just looking at the, like, is that in terms of the, the, the office staff support, the TOSAs? In that, so that's the first part of my question. And then also, I would love to, I guess, hear more about the the calculations likely at a future meeting, but before we make any final decisions on that.
Yeah.
Especially if that piece hasn't been done yet.
We can come back at a future meeting with the calculations to be, to be very direct about how, how this position came up. When we looked at staffing, we, I, I looked at the staffing, Amanda and I shared the staffing with the committee and we, and we noticed that this one, this one office was staffed much higher than any other, any other school. So that was it. Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. I just, we had a discussion at our last meeting about trying to keep bilingual staff because they're in short supply. So I'm a little concerned about this one because I know she's bilingual. I know we're supposed to be talking positions, not people, but it's pretty obvious. So I'm kind of curious about how that came about about a bilingual office person.
Well, and, and it doesn't mean that we're losing the employee. CSCE have bumping rights. There's other positions that to bump into. So, so it's just talking about eliminating that position, not necessarily that employee. And traditionally, when we've done eliminations, where I've worked, like, the last, last year when we did eliminations, we got every employee a landing spot. So we try and hang on to our employees because we always have openings. So again, this was, was looking at the position. It's a, it's a school secretary too. It's not a, a label. It's not a bilingual position. The, the person that happens to be in that position is bilingual and has been doing, doing a great job there for a number of years now.
So chances are she would land somewhere else in the district is what you're saying?
I, I'm saying that, that, that there's, there's a bumping process. So yes, and even when someone has nowhere to bump, like, we look to take care of our employees. So if we're, there's always things that are opening up and and human resources, we're always trying to work with our staff to, to keep them in, in the organization and in support and working with, with our students.
And there are other bilingual staff members, correct?
I would, I would need to look, but I, I believe so.
Um, just a point of clarification, um, the positions on this resolution were also recommended by the Budget Advisory Committee.
Yes. So if we go through it, um,
So we have LMFTs on here.
So
And we have student advisors on here, right?
So the, the custodian floater is the only one that was not recommended by Budget Advisory. That was a vacant position. Um, the mechanic helpers, the student advisor, the school secretary to the coordinator, district guidance, those were vacant, those were the vacancies, the two vacancies of our LMFTs. So it's, no one's in those positions right now. So it doesn't diminish our LMFT support. And the coordinator of budgeting counting is also vacant right now. Um, and those were all approved. Those were all recommendations from the Budget Advisory. It was the custodian floater, as I recall, was the one that was added, added later.
Thank you.
I, as I recall, no. Yeah.
Okay. Oh, oh, yeah.
Isn't, I mean, it's not totally, it's kind of related. So maybe it's better in future business. But if we were ever to want to specify that a position had to be bilingual, which I think is something I'm interested in in the future, but that would have to be something negotiated with our labor partners, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So we have, so there's, there's two, so we have some positions that are bilingual. Like we have, uh, bilingual instructional assistants. We have a bilingual clerk typist. The, the bilingual is part of the requirement of the job and it also include, and it, those positions are usually at least one range, which is 5% higher than their non-bilingual counterpart. And then any other CSEA position, like there, none of our secretary positions, there's a family of secretary positions. None of them, there is no bilingual secretary position. And anyone that's in any other position that is bilingual and uses their bilingualism regularly in the course of their work, then there's a stipend that's associated with that. So, um, our secretaries, uh, that, that are using that, I know for my department, I have a number of, of, of our staff that are using it all the time and they, and they get a stipend on top of their position there, but it's not a requirement of their position. So to, to get that would be something we'd have to negotiate.
Learning so much about human resources, Jason.
More than you ever wanted to know.
Are we ready?
Okay. I move to approve.
Resolution, whatever it's called. Two, four, two, five, three, seven?
All second.
Yeah, I just don't have the number in front of me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Okay, we go on to approval of rev- resolution two, four, two, five, dash, three, eight. Which is, um, they're reducing or discontinuing particular kinds of services by an additional 1.9, uh, FTE. And this is, oh, these are.
This is a P, so this is a PKS. This is separate from the Budget Advisory. These, um, these positions are, uh, for different re, each of them for different reasons were, um, positions that were, um, put in place with the intention of being temporary. So the principal on special assignment was put in place this year because of a leave, knowing that we needed a leave and we need support in that area. Um, the teacher on special assignment professional development was put in place this year for a one-year purpose to support our professional development, um, with our CIC committee. And then, um, the DLI teacher on special assignment, that was grant funded and that funding runs out at the end of this year. So that's why these three were separate because I didn't want to conflate what Budget Advisory Committee had done. And these kind of positions are running their course with funding, you know, by design.
Okay. Okay. Uh, do we have any questions for Jason? All right. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I move to approve. My God, I keep losing the number.
Two, four, two, five, dash.
Two, four, two, five, dash, three, eight.
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion passes. Uh, next approval of, um, resolution two, four, two, five, dash, three, nine, eliminating classified and classified management positions effective June 30th.
So, um, this position is being put forward for elimination because it is currently funded out of Title One at Valley Vista. It's been in position that's been there many years. And with the closing of Valley Vista and the reopening of the Valley Vista Public Walter Charter, that Title One funding is no longer there. So we need to let, this position needs to be eliminated because the funding is being eliminated essentially. Uh, the, then we do know that there will be a need for instructional assistance at, at the school. So, um, I'm, I'm optimistic for our staff, but, um, but we, this is a formality in terms of the funding and how the position is arranged.
I move to approve resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, dash, thirty-nine.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, the motion passes. All right. Sixteen point, three point one overnight field trip, uh, trip requests for educational services.
Hopefully not as long conversation around this action, but it's just a field trip for McKinley to have an overnight social studies enrichment opportunity for the students. Something that they're excited to go to and hopefully something the board can approve.
I just, whenever I see these and I see trip as being funded by fundraising and parent donations, I'm always very curious about how that fundraising is going. Um, and what happens if they don't fundraise enough money for kids who can't afford to go?
My understanding is that, um, that no students are turned away if they don't, if they can't find funding or they don't have enough donations. Um, we can ask school sites to maybe put language in their justification of, you know, what that might be and if there's not enough funding. I know we've just recently updated the field trip forms too, for review, um, that, that, um, that also, kind of gets into more detail about how much funding, how much fundraising, how much donation, how much PTA, so that we get an idea that it's not 90% parent donations and 10% fundraising as opposed to. So that's going to be more clear, uh, in the future, um, um, field trip forms. But, but we can also ask or have some kind of language around, you know, what the school plans to do if there's not enough funding for all students that want to go or for all the classes supposed to go.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this field trip?
I move to approve the overnight field trip request.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. Oh, everybody left. I'm sorry. Not everybody. Um, okay. Oh my goodness. Okay, what? I know. There's also future business. So thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you for all of your comments. It's a, it's a difficult night for everybody. Um, okay, so we have no discussion items. So on to future business.
When I was at Casa Grande, um, office hours, the entire PE department came to talk to me about, um, the current use of exemptions for PE 10. And they, I suggested that the best thing for them to do, I mean, they gave me a handout. So I told them the best thing for them to do would be to make a presentation, give everybody this handout and talk to us about their concerns. So, um, I promised I would contact one of them and let her know, if we could do it maybe the second meeting in March, would that work? Or just let me know and then I'll let her know.
So they're asking to do a presentation or is that what you suggested that they?
Well, they weren't sure how to approach it. So.
Oh, so you're asking for a presentation about it?
So I suggested that they do a presentation and give us their info sheet that they gave me because I had no idea about some of this stuff. So that's what I'm suggesting.
Sounds good to me. I know there's been confusion. I've had parents reach out to me and say, the board approves the exemptions. And I'm like, uh, maybe in theory, but not really. So I think that would be good. And another one that I think I've heard from all of us is definitely a discussion about Title One fundings and how to use at the very least the carryover Title One funds to support a position. Um, and so how much it is and what we can possibly, um, fund with it, even if it is just for one year.
Yep.
I would also want to know the impacts on the school. It's like how much Title One allocation would they, um, lose? If we were to, um, and then how would that affect the students? Because again, we only heard like Caitlin was saying, like, or hearing from McKinley, but I know that the nurse goes to other schools as well. So I would want to know would the Title One come out of their allocations? They're not even all Title One schools. And then just the overall impact of that, um, on the students.
Which schools are Title One? I know McDowell is. Is McKinley?
McDowell, McKinley, um, well, Valley Vista was, um, Kettleworth, Casa Grande. Uh, the alternative sites are all Title One as well.
Okay.
But this, the, the COVID-funded nurse going McKinley, um, Pen Grove, Valley Vista and McDowell, correct?
But I, I would imagine that you could take some off of one nurse's caseload and put them on another caseload. So that, yeah, I think that's definitely worth discussing to see what that,
Yeah.
Title One caseload would.
Right. And then would, if they went on a different caseload, then does that mean that they would have to pay out of their Title One allocation? And is that what they would want? Like, would those fit the needs of the school according to like their SIPSA and all of that stuff?
Would have to go through the process of them having a needs assessment, determining that be the case. I think we were talking about carryover, which wouldn't necessarily be just redistributed to the sites per se. But we would probably need time to pull the exact amount and what we would be looking at for next year. As some schools that are currently not Title One do technically qualify as a Title One school, uh, because they meet the threshold of, uh, socially, uh, low income, uh, socially disadvantaged, uh, populations. So we'll have to see how many schools will apply for the, for Title One funds. Eventually more schools, and I would imagine more schools in the future will, will probably qualify or meet the threshold.
Is there any way to, uh, work in a, a nurse into the LCAP?
So
To, to serve our unduplicated students?
So, um, it would, it would have to go through a very similar process that, through the SIPSA. Uh, if you're talking about, because the LCAP has multiple funding sources, supplemental and then, you know, our base and everything else. So are we saying should a nurse be funded out of supplemental or general or base, you know, funding out of LCAP? Uh, that would be a conversation we'd go through with the LCAP committee, looking at our actions and seeing if that's appropriate use of supplemental and or, you know, um, other, uh, LCAP funds. I would, like, possibly. Um, but again, it's, there's only a limited pot of money. Uh, and so we'd be pulling from something else.
So to piggyback on that conversation, I would like by the end of March to have a discussion and options of funding sources for the nurse position. So we did not include that in the general budget tonight. Um, but we have, uh, I think we have a clear intention of keeping this position. And I think it provides clarity, uh, on our employee and on the, uh, community to get this handled sooner rather than later and give us, the board, you know, the clear, you know, options. And then we can provide, you know, guidance and how we prefer to move forward. Cause we would like to, you know, we are going to keep that position. And it's just about identifying the right source for this next year. And then we can move into a conversation about, you know, long-term.
LCAP would be long-term. Cause it's a three-year.
Isn't this year one of the?
This is year one. Uh, and so
We're in year one.
Year two. And then the third year will be actually re, redeveloping the three-year plan.
Um, I have, um, uh, kind of an unformed, uh, future business, um, around, um, the field trips. And I was speaking to a wonderful parent today and, um, trying to figure out how to, you know, I mean, I know that you were looking at uh, how much it costs for all of these field trips and that we could maybe find some kind of funding. I don't know how, since we just did this, but somehow or another, in order to create more equity amongst the different schools. And also to take some of the, not the burden off of PTAs, but to have the PTAs work together. As, uh, with the district, um, to, you know, kind of create a, something that would work for them. And for us, so that we could make this, um, situation just more equitable and, and less fraught. With, and so much of a burden on parents. You know, it, it is constantly a $250, $300 handout, you know, and it, it's not just for field trips. So if we can look at something, I really do think that that's a, a future business that we have to look at. And I know that the PTAs would be very receptive to that. So that's mine.
I have one more. Speaking of Budget Advisory Committee, um, can we look at combining that with the LCAP committee?
Yeah. Um, typically budget advisory usually is a part of LCAP where they, they work in sync because the LCAP is what drives the budget.
Especially if we are going to have to do this again next year. I would like for it to be a bigger discussion with the LCAP committee. And with the understanding of like what's coming out of the Budget Advisory Committee. Is it recommendations or is it like directives? Cause I feel like that is where the concern is. It sounds like some folks thought like whatever the Budget Advisory Committee was going to move forward with no exceptions, but other folks understood it as a recommendation. So I would just want that to be very clear. And again, part of the LCAP committee.
One more, um, for, uh, potentially a parole timeline, but I would like an update on Pen Grove, traffic, safe, safer routes to school. What is the, um, yes, I know. I know. Well, that's what my.
Are they a Pen Grove? Are they even a city? What are they? A town or something? Where are they? No, I'm on it. I'm for real.
No, for real. I mean, what my, my point is that it looks like, you know, that we have a good partnership with the city of Petaluma, uh, with, with our, you know, our, uh, sites within the ci- city limits. But, uh, that seems to be failing Pen Grove and that seems to be a real, um, issue. I mean, I think we all know, but you know, we, we built, there's a school on a hill and with one driveway and that's problematic. But I would like a review on it, what we can do, um, as a school district, uh, to follow up on our safer routes to school, uh, task force for Pen Grove and any other, you know, um, improvements that we can implement. You know, going into this next year, but just having an overall update on what, what's going on with, uh, with Pen Grove.
I know once upon a time, our former CBO like went to some type of town hall in Pen Grove about traffic safety. But other than that, I don't think it's been addressed since. And I don't even know like what the governing body was there. Do you know?
It would be the county.
Oh, it's a.
It's the county.
Okay. Okay. So maybe it was like a town hall or something. Okay.
They were discussing a lot of, uh, just the traffic on Petaluma Hill. The mess. The mess. All right. Any other future business? Okay. We are adjourning to closed session. Thank you very much. All those intend, you can hang out. We'll be back to, on a public report of action taken in closed session. Thank you.